Okay.
So.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
You have to go sit in the corner.
Sorry, I suppose sometimes.
Thank you.
What scale?
We're having too much fun already, aren't we?
Not really.
All right, y'all ready? Call the commission order, you have any minutes to report?
Yes.
Any reports?
Yes, no, maybe?
Commissioner Committee lays on reports or announcements of other upcoming meetings and/or events.
Lincoln University Blue Tiger Quarterback Club meeting today. Board of Realtors Political Economic Responsibility Committee meeting today. Engineering study for routes BMW in Lawrenceville tomorrow morning. Are you going to that, Larry?
I think I am.
Uh, Board of Directors for the Board of Realtors tomorrow morning. Campo Board of Directors tomorrow noon. Chamber of Connection Thursday.
Good lord!
When are you working?
In my sleep.
Campo does have, uh, speaking of Campo, there are some public hearings on Campo, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. First one's four to six at City Hall, uh, second one's four to six at Mid America Medical Summit. He's trying to put on, you guys gonna go to that, I assume? Is that something the board goes to, or is that just the staff?
I've seen that, but...
Staff probably will do that, just get input from, um, citizens.
Um, there's a, uh, Cole County Parks Committee meeting today here at noon. And then the Republican Club meeting is Thursday. At NIX.
Need to go back to cesspool and platonic this week. Although I'm on my own nickelies now.
Cesspool and the platonic.
You like that?
Yeah.
It's true. You know, you go out there, you go out to DC and you come back, you feel like you ate a couple of shards. All right, I guess we'll, uh, get started here on our bid awards. We got a whole bunch of them.
You're welcome.
I blame Larry mostly. All right, we'll start with road materials.
Recommendation is for the lowest bidder near the work site with available material.
A discussion, entertain a motion to award the bid to the lowest bidder nearest work site with available material.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Twenty fourteen oh three Blades.
Okay, the recommendation is being awarded the lowest bidder in each category with available material.
Entertain a motion to accept the recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Leased equipment, twenty fourteen oh four.
Uh, leased equipment also, award to the lowest bidder in each category with available equipment.
Hey Larry, is there some value in not leasing these things and looking at buying some of them? Some of these seem like they're tremendously expensive for the amount that we're renting them for.
Well, if you go to look at the purchase price, it gets even more expensive. We've talked to Chris a little bit, uh, we usually run a rubber tire loader. We don't rent a whole lot of equipment, use the rubber tire loader and, uh, most time my track, uh, ho, during the summer, is usually going to, we'll pick up skids there from time to time when we need extra equipment, but, uh, those are two main things. Our budget just hasn't supported it. We would love to have one, uh, but equipment wise, we just can't afford it.
I don't even know what a rubber tire loader costs.
Probably talking to two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand.
For a new one?
Yeah. And we've been, Chris, we've been looking, uh, where we possibly, that's how we got our ten ton roller. We actually leased it, uh, so long, uh, we bought it. So, uh, it was kind of a thing of planning that away, so, you know, we're trying to look into it. Uh, Chris talked this earlier, this year, uh, we're looking possibly, uh, you know, if we find a good use, uh, track ho, you know, that's something we could definitely, uh, rubber tire loaders, like we talked with Chris about, had solid calcium chloride, so hard on that equipment.
Yeah.
You know, we're, I think we may be better off where we rent that and then get rid of it.
Just because...
Gotta grab my power cord.
Go ahead.
Because it eats the equipment so bad.
Well, I just, I, I hate the rental, the constant rental stuff.
We do.
And I know that the loader, and Chris and I were talking about it earlier, loader just seems to, I mean, we do that a lot. We use it quite a bit.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, it's thirty-five hundred, four thousand bucks a month, something like that to do it.
Time, uh, we've got a nine twenty-six, um, mark, uh, with the issue we've got, they put, the equipment still run, it still runs, but it's gotten so bad, uh, you know, that's the issue we've run into. It's just about done, uh, before the equipment wore out as far as the, uh...
Body and everything.
Body, yeah, the body, I mean, it just, we started having so many issues. We've moved the nine twenty-six up to center town, so that we load the parts out of there, so...
All right. Well, thanks for my questions, Chris.
All right.
Jeff?
No, I'm fine with it.
All right, entertain a motion to accept the recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Twenty fourteen oh six Public Administrator's Office remodel.
Um, we had four bids, they were all pretty close. Um, the lowest was for GPH builders and the recommendation is for GPH builders. I did want to point out that we did an optional hallway option, which basically is for the separate Dale's office, you know, from that walkway.
Right.
So that's something to look at, that was five thousand, six hundred dollars for the low bid. But the total you'd be looking at for everything is forty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars.
Is all that gonna come out of capital, I assume?
I think so. Question is, my only question is on the hallway option.
Yes, sir.
Is that the clue, taking the big door out?
Yeah.
Yes?
The big door's already gone, the old steel door.
Steel door?
Yeah.
Show you all the instruments, I've been down there.
Yeah, it's gone.
Thank God. I hate that thing where the sheriff was in there and then you...
Oh, that steel door going out.
On the door?
Yeah.
All right.
Is that other door coming out though, or?
Yeah, one door will have to come out.
It'll just be a through hallway with no doors on them?
No, there'll have to be one door at the end by the elevator.
Okay. Yeah, that has, so when they were prisoners, they could secure it.
Okay.
Where are they gonna park when they're doing all the work and everything like that? We've worked with Kaufman and they've been really good to work with and, so where's, uh, GBH kinda know the formula?
Parking's tight and we'll just, uh, have to work them in where we can. I know there's still, should be a couple of spots over where the, uh, over there in the sheriff's lot still, unless they've been given out to anybody.
Are they gonna do a lot of it in the evenings?
Uh, we never brought that up during the day.
Okay. I mean, it worked all right with Kaufman and it, I mean, that was part of you supervising it and so that, you got it under control, good deal.
So my, uh, I have a couple of questions real quick.
Yes, sir.
Kaufman's bid has an asterisk next to it that says, "suggest additional underlayment to scope for additional cost of twenty-five hundred." Is that something we need to look at?
GBH builder, I think once you said, once you rip up the floor...
Once we rip the floor up, that's when we'll know. Uh, they never, you know, that's something, we're not sure what's underneath. Like when we did Judge Joyce, there was an underlayment already there. Uh, we'll just have to see what's under that floor.
So is that forty-seven one hundred a firm price for everybody? I mean, I mean for GBH, or is that...
That's their firm price.
That's their firm price and then if they need to do an underlayment, it's additional twenty-five hundred.
Someone else did the underlayments?
Anybody else, if they had to do an underlayment, would be a change order?
Be a change order too.
Okay. Then my second question is, um, Mira said twenty days to do this project? Everybody else is like sixty to seventy days. Is there a reason why there's such a fast disparity in dates there?
I don't know.
I, candidly, I'd be willing to spend three thousand extra to get it done in twenty days.
I don't know if I can do it in twenty days.
I don't either, but, I mean, I'd be willing to spend it to get it done that quick. Considered seventy days, I mean, that's...
I've never used them, so I don't know anything about them.
But they don't have that much to do.
Oh, MRA, that's Matt Allen.
Oh, is that Matt Allen?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just M R A.
M R A. That's my bad.
It's only four weeks. There's not that much work to do up there.
Why is it seventy days for everybody else?
CYA, 'cause they gotta deal with the courts and parking and steps and people. I'd be curious, see if we could get it done in twenty, I mean, that's dealing with what you gotta deal with. Not that much work, though. We're building the walls, putting the door in, building some walls.
Painting everything, new ceilings, light fixtures.
And I'm gonna ask the caution for the forty-six hundred, is that making all the electrical stuff come out too? We spent that just with the phone company, the wires, the last...
What, oh, in the hallway? What we talked about was Dale, when Dale was there, was putting the wall up, moving the electricity over to the wall, and Dale said he'd take care of the rest with patch cords.
I just, I, I mean, I'm struggling with the seventy day thing, that's my biggest problem. Sixty or seventy days, if somebody can do it in twenty days, I mean... Twenty days from now, we're done by the end of mar, um, April. Seventy days, we're talking what? July, maybe? All the time? You know, my experience with these construction projects, and Jeff, you've gone, we've done them over here, I think we've done ones this year. You know, it's like the bathrooms. They're down for weeks and months because they don't, they're not under any constraint to do it quickly, so they don't worry about it. They know seventy days, they'll rip everything out and then they'll let it sit there.
Well, if we're gonna do it and give them the twenty day constraint, I think we should go to the lowest bidder and say, can you do it in twenty days? Before...
I think that's a component of it.
Well, but I think we, we put off Kaufman many days because the court was having court and they were nice enough to put it off. So it wasn't them, it was us telling them, we've got court going on for this week, you can't come in here.
That's why I think the sixteen, seventy days comes in, is they're saying it's, they realize what kind of stuff they gotta work on.
In their contract, they're putting in, they're saying they can do it in twenty days.
Yeah, I think it's time, you know, to start and time to...
And everybody had the option of putting that in.
Yeah, they...
And everybody put it in. And they've just been, one of them said twenty days.
Correct.
I mean...
But if you tell them to stop because they've got court and...
Yeah, but that doesn't count for one of their days.
Right.
So, for example, if they, if, if GBH says seventy days and we come over and say, hey, you gotta stop this week, you've got a court thing, you can't do it, that doesn't apply to the seventy days.
It could be a hundred and sixty days then.
I know. But with twenty days, I think we can go to the courts and say, we can shut it down down here for twenty days and we'll get done. I, I'm more inclined to, to take the shorter bid as a better bid, even though it's a little bit more expensive because we can get it done. Disruption factor in itself will be of value. Well, it's just all, you still think about it, Chris?
Well, I'm just, you know, until I really read the, uh, the bid documents, um... I struggle with the, I understand where Mark's coming from with the twenty days. I think that does have value. I, I think with this job, most of it's gonna be done fairly quickly. We may be waiting on some floor coverings or, or different things, um...
What's penalties if they don't get it completed in the twenty days?
You can put that in the contract.
So there's no penalties if...
Well, I mean, we could, you put the dates in there and then you provide liquidated damages. We've done that in every construction contract, that's standard language.
You have to, else we haven't time.
Was that in the bid documents?
No, but we haven't executed the contract and I guess if they're not...
All right. But if I'm a contractor and I'm bidding something and I put in our twenty days and you haven't told me that there's gonna be damages if I don't get it done in those twenty days, now I might be leery to execute the contract because, well, you didn't, you didn't tell me that, you know? I told you, I thought I could get it done in twenty days, but you didn't say there was any damages. I mean, normally that's in your, in your bid documents, you know? Same way with a public works project, you know?
Is it done in our bid documents, Larry?
It's in the, in the bid document, we put in the... There's liquidated damage, that's in the bid document.
So do we wanna start putting that in every construction contract and if so, should we kind of establish...
I think it should be in there that if they do go over the time that they indicate they will perform in, there definitely will be some kind of clause in the contract that says there will be...
So I can just put that in the boilerplate, do you wanna do two hundred dollars a day, I mean...
I think it's gonna be different for different contracts. I mean, what's the value of per day on something like this versus something per day on building business fifty out there and patchy flats? I mean, it's worth a lot more.
Courts are ruled, it has to be on a sliding scale in accordance with evaluation of work being performed, so you have to be careful.
I think we did on the elevator project, which is analogous but not perfect, I think we did a hundred dollars a day. It's a kind of, I mean, we, we argued day and night with Sir Pal about it.
We gotta make it have some teeth, though, 'cause if we're gonna award it, not necessarily to the lowest bidder, I'd be willing to say I can do it in twenty days and get the bid and pay a hundred dollars a day for it to go over. 'Cause it's, if you go over two weeks, ten days, that's a thousand dollars on a fifty thousand dollar bid, it's not that big a deal.
So what do you guys think, how much?
Well, if it's gotta be on a sliding scale, Joe, what's the ruling on that?
I don't know. I haven't looked into that.
The sliding scale just, I mean, takes into different things into account. I mean, if you're taking down, if you're taking down, I don't know, the switch that runs all the power in the entire courthouse, and they say it's gonna take a day, that's worth a lot more value if they're over than if they're doing something...
So then who decides what the sliding scale is?
We do.
So like, say if it's taking up court time, it's gonna wait...
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's where I'm leaning, I mean, it's gotta have some teeth, five hundred dollars a day, um...
Makes me have an estimate on the project funding.
Well, I think that's a minimum.
I think in the end, it just depends upon what the project is. You know, if they're out plowing a farm field and we don't really care, why would you worry about it? You probably wouldn't even have the discussion about time.
Mm-hmm.
If it's something like this, it's invasive and disruptive inside the operations of our buildings, I think time becomes more irrelevant. So we guess we do. I'm good with five hundred dollars a day. All these guys have bid sixty and seventy days, so for sure you're gonna have no problem with five hundred dollars a day.
Do you give the lowest bidder the option of doing it twenty days, or do you tell the twenty days, he's got the option to do it at the bottom price? Do we get to negotiate?
Can't do that on a bid.
It's a sealed bid.
The, the day period is...
I know it's a sealed bid.
The day component is, the day period is a component of the bid. So you can't go back and negotiate what you actually did. You can negotiate something that's outside of the bid. For example, the five hundred dollar liquidated damages clause. And we could offer that to any of them. But we can't go back and say, oh, they said they could do the flooring for five thousand, would you do it for four? Can't do that. By statute, we can't do that.
So you're saying we negotiate the contract with whoever we choose?
Terms that are not contained in the bid. Only the terms that are not contained in the bid. Well, we can reject all and go out and bid again and put in the term of a liquidated damages clause.
I'm not worried about the liquidated damages clause, we can deal with that outside of the fact.
That's why, I mean, I agree with you, we can do it outside the fact, I think that's the best way to do it.
I don't wanna stop it, I, I think we just gotta figure out what the value of the time constraint is. And if we wanna go with the lowest or if we wanna go with the...
The lowest and best is the statute.
Lowest and best with the twenty days, so...
I, I just think twenty days is a huge value. I mean, if you charged them...
That's part of the bid, I'm good with it too.
If you charged them a hundred dollars a day liquidated damages, Jeff? And, and you put them all on twenty and GBH actually took seventy days, they would be a higher bid. They actually took seventy days.
Yeah, I guarantee you they didn't...
Cause they'd be five thousand dollars liquidated.
They probably weren't looking at the days and really worried about it being that big of a factor in it, I'll almost guarantee you.
Probably not.
So, but that's part of the bid, so it is what it is.
Twenty days is very aggressive and...
They're sealed bids.
I know.
Twenty days, they've also gotta complete downstairs before they can even start anything upstairs.
Well, I, I realize they've got sixty and seventy days in there, but if, you know, if they were to put two guys on this job paying prevailing wage and benefits, I mean, if they took seventy days, they'd be losing their tail, um...
Does that sound like a deal?
No.
They'll come in and knock a couple of walls down and leave for a week or two and come back and do something else because they're not in any hurry. And that's no disrespect to builders, but if they've got lots of time to build stuff, you know, they can schedule out all their other jobs and say, oh, you know, this one's more pressing, we can do it.
I just think, I agree with you, Mark, the time constraints is worth quite a bit and there's three thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars difference there, fifty days. I'd venture to say that's the lowest and best, maybe not lowest, but best bid.
Did you check any reference from this company?
No, I haven't. We talked about GBH and great, but I haven't called references, I don't know if you work with them or company or anything.
Yeah, I've been around them, the work they've done and stuff. It's no different than anybody else.
Yeah, I mean, if you're good, I'm good.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I, I know GBH has done a lot of commercial construction, MRA probably has not done as much, um...
I just don't wanna come to you guys and thirty days from now and say, oh, we got change orders for here, here, and here. I don't want that to become this issue.
We don't do change orders.
I understand that.
I mean, I, I know both of these guys, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm leaning towards the, to the lowest bid, so, anyway. Even though I do see value in, in the time, time constraints, so, um...
Yeah, I'm, I'm inclined to go with the, the shorter bid, I think the times are... Make a motion? Do you make a motion?
Let's table it for a minute so we think about, move on to the other ones, keep moving, if you wanna do that.
Okay.
Let me sit there and think about it.
We can pass this and just come back to it as long as it's open on the agenda today, otherwise we have to carry it over.
No, I'll keep it moving, I'm just, I mean...
Twenty fourteen oh seven mosquito spray materials.
Uh, the recommendation is to award the lowest bidder in each category with available material.
Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to accept the recommendation, lowest bidder in each category with available material, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, carries, vegeta, vegetation, vegetable. Vegetable! Vegetation spray materials.
Okay, uh, again, award to the lowest bidder in each category with available material.
Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Twenty fourteen ten aerial work platform.
Okay, we put this out with the option for, um, a new genie, new used genie, or an alternate equivalent. I hope you can tell how I laid it out there.
I don't have this one.
Oh.
It's on there.
That's right.
Mine's on.
Yeah, no, I didn't send that one.
It's the only one that's on.
Oh.
Greg and I had to talk about it.
Oh, that's...
So you, what you're saying is you can't fill it?
No, we can't, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the low bid overall is for the alternate equivalent, the JLG thirty AM DC in the amount of eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven fifty-three. The one from Fabic, the fourteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollar one included the super straddle.
That's a kit that you can put off like over the jails, all those tables and stuff are bolted or in concrete. You put it on, you lift it up and you can slide it over top of the work area. In the bidding process, somehow the, that kit got left off, um, so nobody else was able to bid that kit for their product.
Because it wasn't part of the bid package?
It got left out.
Right.
So, so wasn't part of the package, okay.
So the point is, I think you're wanting to look into that for next year.
Yeah.
So is that something we add to it?
Yeah, we can add to it.
So we can take any of these and add that to that later, I mean, is that a, is that a five thousand dollar option?
Yes, it is. Cause of the sensors and stuff, they have to go with it to keep it...
Are we gonna get our use out of this, that this makes this purchase worthwhile?
That's the only way we can get up to change them lights over at the jail. There's no other way to get up there. The vents, everything else, there's no other way to get up there.
Is this a...
We can use it elsewhere, it loads on the back of a pickup.
Right.
So we can use it out at the Shepherds.
Is this like a one man lift?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's other places we can use it other than jail too. We can use it over here in the courtroom on the third floor.
It'll go in an elevator?
Yep.
I mean, I assume you'll have to have training on this and...
Yep, it's included.
Certified, what, what about getting this thing, um...
Recertified?
Yes.
It's every three years.
Okay.
On a new one.
Okay. Where are we gonna store it, Shepherds?
We can store it either at Steffers, we can store it down with where the maintenance stuff is downstairs currently at the jail, or...
If we're gonna use it at the jail, then most wouldn't you store it there? Somewhere down there, we'll find a place, not...
So what's the recommendation for what? The used one, the alternate?
I was hoping to have some pictures of the used one to see what I could see, if it was beat up or whatever. He couldn't give me how many hours are on it either, uh, you know...
Doesn't sound good.
So, uh, my recommendation, genie's been around forever, JGL is...
JLG.
JLG, I'm sorry, it's been out on the market a few years. Uh, I can't justify the difference between Fabic and...
United.
United versus, you know, one's a services Columbia, one's Jeff City. Uh, seven hundred dollars difference, uh, I would just go probably with the J, JLG. I can't justify a seven hundred dollars difference to...
Do we know that JLG has the straddle kit?
Yes, it does. It is offered.
Do we know what that costs?
No, I don't.
How important is the straddle kit?
It would be nice...
We get this thing for you to work in the jail and change light bulbs? You gotta change light bulbs in one of those pods, can you do it with this piece of equipment without the straddle kit?
It's gonna be tough.
So we really need to get both of them at the same time.
So it sounds to me like we need to reject and rebid.
Reject and rebid, okay, that's fine.
With the straddle as, I mean, I, it almost sounds like that's a mandatory component.
Yeah, this, uh, I mean, it's a one man lift, I mean, it's, it needs to be outfitted their proper way. I mean, I, I've been helping one of them and they're not the most fun thing to be.
Do we have to reject these and rebid it, or can we just have them add the option for the straddle? Or give us a price on the straddle kit?
We could bid the straddle kit separately.
I mean, I don't necessarily wanna buy a straddle kit from Fabic, are they bidding the same straddle kit?
If, if it's a genie, you allow it to be for a genie.
So it's a different straddle kit?
Right.
Cause then that's just gonna be...
I don't think we can do that now that these are open.
I, I have a hard time keeping up the... Because Fabic said the price includes a super straddle.
Well, that's the bad thing too, is everyone's showing their cars.
Yeah, they could take a hit on the straddle kit.
I mean, I don't know the best way to do it.
Rebid it then, I guess. Well, I hate that.
Hey, I hate having people... I'm just curious what, I, I mean, I wish there was a way to find out if you were to take what that costs and what we're talking about.
I mean, I'm sure there's a way to get up all part, nothing really going on.
So you're wanting to see what a price of a straddle kit for the JLG would be to see if it's, if it's a four thousand dollar add-on, that's gonna be less than what the Fabics was with the super straddle. Versus seeing if it's a eight thousand dollar add-on.
I just don't, I have no idea what the cost number is.
Any idea?
No, I don't.
Fabic shows on a genie as being about five thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Five thousand six hundred dollars.
Is a JLG, it's a used model as well?
No, that's a new one.
That's a new one, okay.
I think we just have to reject it. I can't see a way to. Jennifer, what do you recommend?
I recommend rejecting it, that's what Greg and I had talked about, so.
Timing's not super critical on this, is it?
No.
That makes it easy then. Entertained motion to reject the bids?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and if you guys will repackage that bid package, get it back out.
Will you, will you research some of that, I mean, uh, you know, I hate to keep coming back to this, but can we get out, um, so next time you guys bring something to this, to us, can you go out on the internet, I mean, I pulled it up just, just now and there's some stuff out there, Genie thirty S that I'm seeing that's compatible, I don't know if it's got the super straddle or not, but, I mean, there's, there's stuff out there and so I'd like to be able to see that so that I know that we're getting a good price on this, especially if they throw something else in there, I mean, if that was a great price on the super straddle, I might have been said, yeah, let's do it. Just because nobody else included it, but there's so many resources out there, Machinery Trader, different things, I mean, just, you know, if you could, give me a couple snapshots of, of some other stuff that's, that's on the internet, I mean, it's, it's a great tool, I mean, it, at, at least it gives you a little bit of an idea of what you're looking at and, um, you know, maybe even a used one, or, um, I just, I'd like to see that so that I can make a better decision.
Do we ever go on gov.deals or anything and look everywhere? You do? Okay, good. I hate rebid, it's just, it happens sometimes.
Yeah. If it was time sensitive, a different deal. All right, we'll move on to the next one, which is lawnmower.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this one.
Twenty fourteen dash eleven, so I'm not gonna stay here for that discussion with Pops in there.
I'm not gonna take that long.
We got bids for, um, two different sizes.
Call him, please, keep him out of the room. I can say that for a while, usually I'm the one stepping on it, so.
The forty-eight inch and the fifty-two inch, um, in both cases, considering the trade-in, Pops was the lowest, so the question, uh, is just what size of the forty-eight or the fifty-two?
I just got.
Hundred and sixty dollars.
I just gotta see what fits on the trailer out there.
So we don't know which one will work?
I'd like to have the fifty-two, but do I need the fifty-two depending on what happens with the building at Shepherds, I won't need a fifty-two, I can go to forty-eight, either one will work.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got feelings.
Either way, Pops is the cheaper, it's really just a question of do you want a forty-eight or do you want a fifty-two?
What size is your trailer?
It's one of them small ones that, uh, was bought at Lowe's, it's like forty-eight and a half inches or something, or somewhere around there, forty-eight, fifty-two inches, I just have to see what fits.
I would suggest we award the bid to Pops because they're lowest either way.
Right.
And the decision on the forty-eight, fifty-two would be awarded to Pops based upon which someone fits the trailer. We're gonna end up having to sign a PO or something on it anyway, so.
Okay, I'm good with that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, Director Flick, Jeff, uh, recused himself for the bid. Done.
Done.
So was there yet, uh, EMS mattresses?
Got more kids in trouble.
We didn't just give you one response, but it was significantly under what it was pledged to be, one thousand three hundred ninety-nine recommendations for JC mattress.
We got one bid?
Yes.
How's this bid end with our plan to do something with that facility?
This is for the outlining stations.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't really have a problem with the bid, but I'm frustrated because we continue to get one bid or no bids on various projects and, uh, and I'm just wondering, are we, are we sending stuff to certain vendors to inquire, please bid our project? So, I mean, I see Loaf and, and, uh, Pops giving us a bid, um, and maybe that was just because of a certain type of mower, um, but, uh, you know, here again, it seems like over and over and over, we're getting one or, or no bids on these things and I know there's other people that can bid this. So are they, they just not know about it, or, um?
I don't know, I'm assuming that it's on, on the website, goes out to whoever.
Are we actually sending it to individuals?
On occasion on this one, I do not.
Okay.
It just kind of depends on what it is, sometimes you know you're gonna have to drum up some business, but I mean, this one, I'm kind of surprised that it wasn't for the one.
Man, I'm not so much picking on this one, I mean, that's, this is just the way it is, but I mean, I know that the courts bid some stuff and we got no bids on it, and it's, uh.
There was five people at that pre-bid, I think it's because there was such stringent time requirements for that one, that that one, for the amount of money, that no one.
But to not throw amount of money at it, I mean.
I mean, they doubled their price.
Yeah, or tripled their price.
There was, there was five people at that pre-bid.
And this is not to the bid requirement anyway, to these mattresses. I'm fine with awarding it to JC mattress, I agree with Chris, I mean, the beauty of the bidding system is the more bids we get, we generally get more competitive prices. But in the, in the end, you can, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. I was gonna say, we've handled it, just, um, and they still good.
Yeah, that's just, that's just the way it is, sometimes it doesn't work out for certain people, but, um.
You think on box springs and mattresses.
Yeah, I mean, it's a no-brainer, this is a ten-minute bid that you fax in, so.
All right, I entertain a motion to award bid to JC.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Uh, do we want to go back, Jeff, have you mauled enough, or you want to keep passing it until we go to the end of the agenda?
No, let's, let's go back to it, um, let's.
So we're going back to the leased equipment, the, or no, excuse me, the, uh, public administrator.
Greg brought something up that we probably need to, if we're gonna award it to MRA, needs to be pointed out to him that the office, her new office has to be finished first, and I wasn't really thinking about that, I was thinking they can be hammering away at all of it, knocking it all out at the same time, but.
With the bid, what did the bid offer decide?
There was no.
You had a pre-bid, or?
We had a pre-bid.
Well.
Did that explain to him in the pre-bid?
But we can't move her until that's done, so.
Was that explained in the pre-bid?
Yeah, then basically we, this project had to be done hallway and then upstairs.
Then, I think that's a component, they bid with that at their. That's why we have a pre-bid.
That's, that's fine, as long as he knows that, that's part of it. Make sure, and then we also are gonna, um, make sure they honor the twenty days, if not, there's gonna be the liquidated damages, I mean, can we?
That goes in the contract, and that'll have to come back anyway, we have to do the contract. Because we can't actually approve the contract till it's here.
But how much can we put on there, I mean, we said two hundred and fifty dollars, we kind of picked that out of the air, if there's some kind of a rule, sliding rule that says it can be.
You'll have to see what a fair amount is.
Because it needs to have plenty of teeth.
I agree.
I think five hundred is good, I thought we decided that sounded good.
Ten percent of what we contract.
Ten percent of the outstanding, that's kind of a.
That's five thousand dollars. That's the retained.
Well, ten percent of the outstanding could be just for, um, for redoing her office, and it could be, uh, what was that, twelve thousand, so, so that could be a thousand dollars a day.
You can't do that. Run a little probably five hundred dollars a day, a fifty thousand dollar contract. You know, they can always refuse to enter in the contract, and we have other bidders out there.
Well, I just, yeah, I just want to make sure that, because somebody else might bid and say, heck, you know, if it goes over a week, I'd take a hit for twenty-five hundred dollars to get a fifty thousand dollar bid on this, so. It's a big time difference, if it was one week or something, I wouldn't be mauling it so much, but.
One week start time, two week start time is also a difference on there too.
We're gonna probably take a couple weeks to get the flooring and stuff in that we need to, have we got that all ordered?
I, that's theirs, they're ordered, well, that's on them.
Because I wouldn't start that job until I had everything here for it, including the floor.
It says two weeks. I mean, that's all put in the contract, we go.
So you had the specific time of, of, or type, I'm sorry, specific flooring, so it says VCT color number seventeen forty-three with X-colored grout and.
It's two weeks from when we execute the contract though, right?
When we execute the contract, so.
Ceiling tile was all picked out.
Okay.
When will that be?
Lot of pictures were all picked out.
Okay, very good. Do that next week, or?
Assume next week, I mean, the contract's fairly simple to get put together.
I mean, the commercial stuff or government stuff's a little different than residential.
I'm out next week, but you guys can approve that, yeah. Well, no, I mean, whatever, whatever we decide, yeah, I'm okay with moving forward, so.
And if they, if they decline on the contract, we just go to the other bidder.
And let's explain to them about change orders, we don't know what they are. Unless something comes up that's just.
If we incur it, we're okay with change orders. Sometimes, no, 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 if the three of us incur, we're okay with change orders. You incur it.
And I don't have a problem letting somebody that hasn't done work with us do it before, we did that with, uh, a concrete worker for Public Works and they've turned out to do a very good job, um. Had really good luck with, yeah, I mean, you gotta give him a shot at it and maybe he stuck his neck out on a line to do the twenty, twenty-day thing and
I would entertain a motion to award the contract to MRA.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it, any discussion, Chris?
I just, I don't know, I, I see the advantages and disadvantages and I just, I don't know, I just struggle with, um, not awarding it to the lowest bidder and, I don't know. I, I know Matt and I know GBH and so, I don't know, it's, it's a struggle for me and so, I, uh, I don't know, I'm just leaning towards the, the lowest, lowest bid and it's just where I'm at, so.
Are you okay with moving forward on the vote?
Mm-hmm.
All right, all those in favor of the motion to award to MRA, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Nay.
Aye, two, one vote, motion carries, we get a contract, Shannon?
Please check the reference too.
All right, zoning plan ballot language. Shannon?
We've got, we hand it to you, the, uh, statute, uh, is pretty set forth on how it's, uh, probably needs to be worded on the ballot.
So the question is, do we go August or November?
I like, I like the simple language.
I do. Been a long time since I've seen simple language on a ballot.
Our consultant, when we, uh, go back with him, he said, you know, uh, the last few ones that have been put forth around the state, at the most, they might have changed it, Shaw County of whatever, but a lot of times it's been as per RSO.
I'm fine with Shaw County's only be adopted, August or November, Dick?
Didn't Marvin recommend?
Well, I think Marvin's recommendation was a good one, there's gonna be a lot of petition ballots, issues on the ballot, uh, in November, which it appears that there will be, it tends to bring out the negative votes or anything, in other words, Dr. No votes, so therefore with the county, uh, the primaries that we have, that are going to take place in August, I lean towards August just for that reason, because I assume that, um, at least most of the candidates that we have in primaries are going to be in favor of zoning, and when they're out campaigning, they can also be promoting zoning issues.
We have very, as of now, very tiny ballot in August. We're not gonna get any turnout.
I'd hate to say.
I mean, November's not gonna be a whole lot better.
Right, so.
With nothing, you know, no high-profile races, not any better.
I don't, I mean, the only reason I lean towards August is because if they have all the initiative petitions on the ballot in November, it brings out a lot of no voters against particular issues, and of course, it could bring out positive ones too, so.
I, I don't have a preference on one or another, I, I was asking for your, your, on behalf of the commissions, what is your recommendation?
My personal recommendation is August.
And will the plan be ready, that it can be out, be seen in a fairly close to final format before the election?
Uh, it's ready now.
It's ready now.
So we're ready, oh, we already said we go to public hearings.
Right, we're gonna go to public hearings, and if someone brings up an issue that we exist or whatever, you know, we'll, we're still open to making changes. That's, but right now, we, I, I think, speaking for the committee, I think we have a prior that's ready to take our voters.
Um, my only concern is that, uh, sometimes people stick measures on a certain, uh, certain time periods to, so that the low turnout vote kind of will win, um, I know different, different organizations have picked, uh, February ballot initiatives and, and different things so that, you know, low turnout and they can get it passed, um, I know there's a lot of people that, that have voiced concern over it, um, a lot of people that I think will, will definitely vote for it, and so I just want to make sure that we're getting it on the a ballot when we'll get a, a great turnout and, and know what, uh, what our residents want.
You gotta wait till twenty sixteen for presidential race.
Well, then you're only getting fifty percent.
Well, not here, we get seventy plus percent, we do good. I, what do you think, Jeff?
I'd rather do it in August and that way the people that actually care about it, hopefully inform themselves about it, come out and vote on it. Rather than maybe in November, the ones that show up, they actually want to vote for a person, but they want to vote no against anything else, so.
That's true.
Um, I see where you're coming, sometimes you put that on there, you play that game, but I'd rather do it in August and go ahead and keep it moving, we're gonna have the public meetings before that, so.
August fifth, um, then we need the full, as opposed to voting, I think now, we need the resolution and all that stuff, because we can't actually put on the ballot unless we have all the proper paperwork.
Okay.
Which is a resolution that actually says we're calling an election on August fourth and putting this measure on the ballot, that, go look at the last, the capital improvement sales section, you'll see, it's an actual, there's a procedure you have to be put on the ballot, that that's easily done.
And anybody that's against it can go talk to, uh, what's their name?
Jeff?
About the, about the roosters in the backyard.
Yeah. Talk to Mr., was it Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, I wasn't gonna write any names, but.
No, he's got the goats.
But the roosters, you know, that, somebody, something.
I'm good with August, August fifth or sixth, let's, let's get it going.
We have lots of time to put on the ballot, so we're not, we don't have to do it this week.
We've got a core work, uh, I'm pretty sure in the file, on the computer, where we can just pull it up and change the wording.
Now, I will say, um, personally, on the public meetings, we need to get as much public notice out on these as possible, ads in the paper is not sufficient. I know that's what we're required by law, but we need to get it out by, you know, any other means.
Email, Facebook, yeah.
Twitter it, I mean, if you can send me a link, I'll tweet it out, we can, I think it's important that this gets out in every medium, for those public meetings, that everybody knows we're having these public meetings, so.
Like I've always said, it's up to the citizen whether it's going or not.
Absolutely.
Where we can do to get it out.
I agree.
And when you get the date set, let us know, because I'd really like to be at the meetings and hear what the. And when you get the date set, let us know, because I'd really like to be at the meetings and hear what the concerns are, as well as the zoning advisory committee, cause y'all are gonna be the ones making a change to it, but.
Yeah, I agree. As soon as you get those dates, let us know, because that'll also let us be able to turn them up too.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the county's payable review. I know each of us has an expense report in there, so I'm gonna exercise my discretion and say, I entertain a motion to approve the county's payable review excluding Chris's and Jeff's. I'll abstain, and then it'll be yours and then yours.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Um, yeah. I went through a couple of these, and of course, I think you were aware of that, the validation of parking.
Right.
For jurors.
I tried to talk to the court administrator, unfortunately, he was not around.
But, uh.
But I talked to two today too.
Anyway, um, so, very concerned about the precedents that we're setting there, and I know we were doing trolleys at one time, and now we're, now we're validating parking in a parking garage, and.
Well, the trolleys were just for that one big trial, as I recall, that big capital trial where they had to be sequestered constantly.
Right, so, anyway.
Put it off till next month, and let's get him in here and have a talk with him, cause we've got some other stuff we need to talk to him about too. Um, we've had other bills that they've paid without getting an okay, a desk over there, which essentially was a change order.
I agree.
I had a phone call yesterday about some stuff that got held up about a computer and.
Pay this, you wanna sit on it? That's it, I don't care.
I say we pull it out.
All right.
And then we can pay it in two weeks. I mean, it's, there's not gonna be a late fee or anything on there, is there? All right, well, if they do, we can make a phone call.
No, no, I got some that I just, um, so that was it.
Then, Zena, I had a motion second. Would you call a roll on that?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I've recused myself since I have a reimbursement page in there. Now I entertain a motion to approve Jeff's reimbursement.
So moved.
Second, call a roll.
Yes.
I recuse myself from it.
Yes. Now I entertain a motion to approve Chris's.
So moved.
Reimbursement, second, call a roll.
He was getting a little worried there for a minute. He's got, oh crap, yes.
Yes.
Oh.
He made a motion, I seconded it, that's correct. Yes.
Recuse myself. Got all that?
It may be over till, but it's just, that way we're not voting on money for ourselves.
Yeah.
Makes it look cleaner, better to. All right, next item on the agenda is second and final reading of budget adjustment numbers one, two, and three. Thank you, twenty-one hundred thirty dollars, uh, for a state court child abuse and blood grant is number one. Number two is two thousand dollars for fostering court improvement grant, and number three is eleven thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars for Public Works surplus property. I entertain a motion to approve the three quarter orders.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, call a roll, please. Aye.
Yes.
Yes, by roll call vote, but adjustments numbers one, two, and three are approved. Next item on the agenda is signing a Jefferson City area charter and commerce agreement. Uh, do we sign these traditionally before they do?
Well, they actually signed the other contracts.
So we need to send this one back to them? Do we wanna sign it and send it back? Do we wanna send it back and have them sign it and send it back to us?
Well, you've made some additions to that, to that language, so I think they need to be, uh, agreeable to that, and, and, uh.
Let's send it over to them, for their, for them to sign on their signature, we can pick it back up.
I mean, to that note, I mean, I've, I've talked to you guys a little bit about, um, that, and I know we've, we've been frustrated with some of the responses that we've gotten in regards to who they're contacting and, and different things, and, I, I would just, for one, like to see more res- response or, or data that would show us what they're actually accomplishing. And I don't know, do they have to do that publicly, or can they do that individually, or, um, I'd just like to see who they're talking to, who they're working with on, on economic development. And I know they've, they've been very defensive when we brought that up.
Yeah, you missed a good one. No, I agree, and I think they need to communicate better.
I mean, we're, you know, we're giving them a lot of money, and I, I think we, we're responsible for overseeing what they're doing, and, and so.
And I would suggest this, Debbie, when you send that over to them, tell them that we would like them to come up for whenever they want to bring it back up. Whenever they wanna bring it up, we'll put it on the agenda, we'd like them in attendance, cause I think these are discussions that's, the three of us can talk about it together. It's better to have them in the room if we have that discussion.
I would agree, I would agree.
Is that okay? All right, thanks Debbie. Signing a vax care agreement. Mary?
Did you enjoy all that?
We got to see all sorts of fun stuff.
One too bad.
I don't know why you're coming for every meeting.
Christie's in Emmitsburg is why she's here now, right?
Oh, that's right.
So, you drew the short straw, huh?
Jill didn't see the agreement.
Yeah, just to let you know, I only had one issue, which was Florida law, and I emailed Christie and I said, it's your call, and she said she didn't have a problem with that. She's dealt with them for school immunizations, and she didn't think we'd have problems. So I just felt like I need to let you know. I did mention that.
Okay, you'll look at it?
Yes.
Motion to approve the agreement with vax care.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, call a roll, please.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
By roll call vote, the agreement's approved. Thanks, Mary. All that we're, all that sitting through, all that pain for.
Wow, are we almost done?
We are. Next item is signing a resolution for Blurrett Wrestling Team.
I brought that up. This is our first ever championship, our twelfth season. Uh, just thought they should deserve some recognition for it, and, you know, anybody else, we can recognize our state championships too as quite a feat, so.
I entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second. Who's your nephew?
Jeff made the motion, Chris made a second. It is.
Oh.
All right, sorry.
I got a head start on him early, now he's trying to catch up.
Call a roll, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, guys.
Roll call votes approved. I would add a motion that Jeff present this to the wrestling team on behalf of the county commission.
Should be Wednesday night, so.
So will you take care of that?
Yep.
Thank you very much, Jeff, appreciate it. Okay, any other items coming for the commission today?
Uh, well, I pulled up again, we had somebody coming to the side door, and there's no entrance sign arrow, so I directed Greg to get a sign made, so. He'll probably be getting hold of you, Larry. I just wanna make sure that you guys are okay with that.
Good.
I think I've asked him that, you know, before, and I don't know if it just, it fell through the cracks or whatever, but so many people come to that door, and they.
Come out over here, or at our door?
This door off of High Street, coming into the courthouse.
Right.
And then they don't know where to go. There's no arrow saying entrance.
Well, there's a sign, but it's inside the doorway, so it really makes it hard to, to see.
So I said, I don't care if you hang it on the rail, it just has a entrance with an arrow.
Put a yellow brick road out there so people know where to go?
Stained concrete. Follow the courthouse signs. And I get, did Donnell get hold of you yesterday too about the desk? So when do we wanna bring that up? When do we wanna figure out what they're gonna do with that?
That has to say, if it's what, same thing that we talked about, so I think that's a close second discussion.
No, no, he's talking about the benches.
Oh, well, oh, the zero bid? Zero bids, we need any bids? Yeah, I don't know what we do with that.
Well, I pulled out the statute, and it set out the emergency provisions, one of which is to preserve the functions or whatever, something like that, so I underlined it. And she's taking it to the judge.
Okay, so they gotta come back to us?
Yeah.
Perfect, I like that even better.
So, if it's okay with them, then.
Then we'll take it up, I guess.
And where are they gonna sue us, so?
Don't, don't say that, Jill.
That's good practical advice, I like it. Well, you know, the issue is, nobody would have standing to sue us, because if nobody bids, nobody has a claim to say that they can't have a bid award. So, it, you know, it is exactly what you said earlier on, if you just, if somebody had just thrown in a hundred thousand dollar bid, or twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars worth of work, and we, we could reject it, we have to rebid, but we could not award it to somebody else who came in and said, hey, I can do it for a grant.
We get that a lot, on our bids.
And nobody bid, you know?
Yeah, but I got a feeling that, from what Jennifer said, the reason nobody bid was the timeframe, and I just don't see the courts wanting to bury a whole lot on the timeframe. They want their stuff done, yeah. They want their stuff done.
Otherwise, they get thrown into the bottom to recycle.
Yeah, the problem here is, they waited too long. If they, if we'd have put this bid out in November, we'd already had it easy.
Well, Donnell said we should've done it in phases. There's four courtrooms, and, so.
Not my, not my issue, that's theirs.
That's, I just didn't wanna be a hardship on Donnell, and it wasn't necessarily her doing.
It's not Donnell's responsibility, and this is, they, they got a little dysfunction going over there.
Donnell's the one that has to pick up the pieces and try to get something done.
What else you got, Debbie? Cause I can see she's got papers there she wants to talk about.
Couple things with awards for the commission.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that you would like to put the new city administrative under the jury, and then there are regional planning commissions.
Yeah, I think so. We've always done that.
Hey Larry? Or, well, Shane, both of y'all, well? Do you want us to go ahead and reappoint Dick Pearson?
Is that done by us?
Okay, hang on one second. Or just tell Melody add it to the next agenda.
Okay, I'll do that.
That'll be fine, and then I'll try to find somebody for Doug.
I think they appoint that. I don't think we do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't.
We do need to appoint somebody to the GIS advisory commission, and we have Marie there. I suggest we put Christie on it, and let the health department person on it. So I entertain a motion to appoint Christie Campbell to the GIS advisory committee.
So moved.
Second.
All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both motion carries. I have not heard anything from the library board.
Um, Dick Pearson would like to be reappointed for the, uh, planning commission, so if we're doing all those today, we can go ahead and do it. Um, Doug Cleathermose would like to be replaced.
But we have a replacement, we need to get him.
I, I might have to see who I can think of in Liberty Township for that one.
Lynette Gooch is gonna be stepping off, and, uh, she has a replacement for.
Hers is April, I think.
And she'd like to resign.
I entertain a motion to reappoint Dick Pearson.
So moved.
Second.
All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. As far as Doug and Lynette go, we got five replacements.
I'm working on a replacement for Lynette, so.
Planning commission.
All right, so I'll work on some for Doug.
E-Z or Enhanced Enterprise Zone, Bernie Fectal and Travis Racker's terms have expired, we wanna reappoint them for five-year terms.
Are they willing to do it?
I'd say we might have talked to them.
All right, next.
Does that, I mean, what's the one that Bernie and Travis were on, do they, is that one do anything anymore? Do they?
But, I mean, we created the zone, so if anybody wants to locate in them, they have to.
Okay, so that's one of those, that meets when they have to, okay. I'll go Travis, and I'm pretty sure he's still. Bernie may wanna get off with it, since he's had some health issues, he may just step back or, since he really don't meet a lot, he may not be.
And I can reput this on the agenda, I just don't have any basis, um, the indirect cost study.
Yes.
Last year, two thousand and twelve, was the first time we had not done a report, because our child support unit did not have to have one enrolled to get reimbursed.
Okay.
We do use that report for jail cost per day, and we also use that report for assessment of what we charge them for computer services.
Okay.
So what you guys told me in two thousand and twelve, I charged them the same as what I charged them in two thousand and eleven.
Okay.
Now, I have asked child support, again, they don't need this report till the year two thousand and fifteen.
Okay.
Do you guys want me to keep charging the same amount to the assessor's office till then, or would you like to do a re.
I don't wanna spend money doing a report.
Cause it will cost probably eight to nine thousand dollars, which is what it has in the past.
I don't spend it, that's my deal.
I have asked the Jer- the sheriff if he needs that jail cost per day. I guess not that bad. I'm assuming he doesn't.
Well, the jail cost per day, is that just, uh, I mean, what is that in relation to? Cause the state's not paying what they should be paying anyway, so.
I'm not sure what he actually used it for, other than to have somebody.
Just to have a report.
And maybe what he charged other counties, but again, that's not exactly what the charges other counties pay. So, I don't even know if we do house other counties anymore.
Well, the, uh, what I got the other day from Donnie was that we had like a hundred and twenty, and of those, nineteen were federal and one was city. Um, so, I, yeah, I, I vote we don't, uh, don't spend the money on the, the study, so.
I'll just bring it up next year.
I agree. What's the difference between what it costs us to house a prisoner than what it costs to house one in other counties? I mean, should there be that much of a difference, or can they do a statewide study and say, here's what it should be?
You mean how much we charge somebody else?
Well, what they're saying the cost is, is all manipulated by different numbers.
So, for example, we, we have debt service payment on the building.
Right.
Okay? If we house no prisoners, we still have a debt service payment on the building.
Right.
So, you know, somebody once told me that, you know what the cost of the inmates are over there? The first one costs six million dollars. After that, it costs like fourteen bucks a piece.
Yeah. Well, that's true.
That's what I mean, you can manipulate the numbers and make them go in the way you wanna.
If you have a hundred and eighty people over there, the cost per day is less than if you have a hundred people over there per day. There's kinda no way to, it's.
Yeah, how many, how many personnel do you have to take care of, how many inmates and everything?
The real difference is, if you get too full, you have to have people. If you don't, if you keep it in the, where you can just have your regular staffing, and really the incremental cost is three meals a day, the washing of the sheets and clothes, and, you know, I guess the lights in some of the bays.
Well, if we are overcrowded and we gotta pay forty-six dollars somewhere else a day to have it done, then isn't that what our cost is basically, is forty-six dollars a day?
Yeah, but we're still having to pay the forty-six dollars a day, and we're having to pay somebody else forty-six dollars a day, so it doesn't help us any.
I think it's close enough.
I agree.
Okay, anything else?
The only thing I wanted you to know, the assessor has sent over two reimbursement forms, one for a meeting back to October two thousand and thirteen that's received for meal, and another employee for mileage travel going back to October two thousand and thirteen. I am sending him the policy. Um, we have let people go back three months, but obviously this is extended past the three months, so it goes to be ready for some.
Is that for him personally, or is that for him personally, or?
And it happens to be the same travel that we denied him those reimbursements for, food, because of the conference included the food. So the, this is the, now we have received.
All right, I entertain a motion to stand in recess on that note.
Is that, is that all you got, Debbie?
My hands are actually hurt.
Debbie, is that all you got?
Yeah.
Anything else?
So moved.
Second.
All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries, motion standard, or is that?
Who's pouring?
Mark, can you do an interview?
I was thankful today.
Mark, can you do an interview?
Sure. My brain is fried now, I forgot. Just hearing the words.
Barn him, barn him.
Late payment.
Give him hell. Mark, what? You want us to come up with questions? We can help you.
Sure.
You're gonna get the microphone stuck on you, then we'll see how it goes.
Still live, hold on.
No, Marvin will appoint, uh, Chris as presiding in your absence. I done lost my buddy over there. Just cause of damn snow day. See if I can do this without spilling this on the resolution of all things.